I'd like to call the Monday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone this evening and those watching at home. Tonight's agenda consists of the meeting minutes for May twenty fourth and June fourteenth will be placed on, yeah, will be placed in the July twelfth agenda. Sorry, I got you. Yeah, at that point, you know. Item two is a conditional use permit for McCarthy Hyundai I seventy billboard. Items three, four, and five are Unified Development Code text amendments. These items will be heard after six and seven. Item six is a planned residential overlay final plan for Sunny Point Third Plat, lots sixty-four through eighty-nine and tracks J through O. Item seven is a final plat for Sunny Point Third Plat. And item eight is other business and item nine is adjournment. So we'll go ahead and move to item two. And I'll open the public hearing for the conditional use permit CUP zero-six-two-one-seven-seven-nine-three McCarthy Hyundai I seventy billboard and ask for exhibits from our city attorney.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on June twelve, twenty twenty-one. Four, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference. Nine, email received June twenty-one, twenty twenty-one from Jeffrey Anthony McCarthy Auto Group in favor of the request.
All right. Thank you. And at this time I'd ask for the staff's presentation. It looks like we've got some new faces, so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jim Marcus McGee. I'm a new associate planner in community development and I'll be introducing Hyundai billboard presentation. Before you this evening, I is a request for a conditional use permit for a billboard on McCarthy Hyundai property at three thousand thirty Northwest South Outer Road. The property is owned as GB, General Business, which allows outdoor advertising or billboards approval for conditional use permit. Staff reviewed the billboard under signed code regulations and finds that the proposed billboard meets all development standards contained with the signed code. The billboard meets the minimum two thousand foot separation standard from the billboard on the south side of I seventy. The nearest billboard is located approximately three thousand three hundred feet to the east between I seventy and Northwest South Outer Road. All the others have been met, including a minimum three hundred foot setback from residential. The proposed billboard is approximately four hundred feet from multifamily residential zoning to the south of the car dealership. All other setbacks based on the sign area height have been met from the front side of property lines. The proposed double-faced billboard is forty-nine feet tall from grade to top in the sign area. The sign area is forty feet by fourteen feet or a total of six hundred and seventy-two square foot. Both the sign area and the sign height meets the sign code requirements. Staff reviewed the billboard on the outdoor advertising special use standards and finds that all standards have been met and the billboard is approximately located in a general commercial zoning district adjacent to I seventy frontage. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with three conditions and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. And did the commissioners have any questions for staff? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak about this? And you'll need to be sworn in and state your name and address.
Okay. Do you sound as where to sell the truth, the most truthful truth, and nothing but the truth to help me back? I do. Jim Bay, one forty-four fifty, South Seventy-One Highway, KCMO. I am president of AdTrend. We also have David English in here as well. We are local. We've been in business in Kansas City since nineteen eighty-five. Most of the time we sell all of our billboards to local people. There was pretty stringent qualifications to get this location done. Not only did we have to meet all of the Blue Springs qualifications, but also MODOT, which has their own. And we've already received that permit on May seventeenth. We were happy to find a location that met staff approval and we appreciate staff approval and we would appreciate your positive acceptance as well. And I'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Bay? All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Any further discussion from the commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to ask staff, this, the graphic that you're currently showing here, is that the distance map from the sign to sign or what is that graphic?
It's a distance between the other billboard, the distance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other question or any other further discussion or comments from the commissioners? All right. Here are none. I will close the public hearing and I would ask for a motion on the CUP. Commissioner Peel.
I move the CUP zero-six-two-one-seven-seven-nine-three for McCarthy Hyundai I seventy billboard with three conditions be approved as submitted by staff.
All right. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stockenberry. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Stockenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. So this will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Wednesday, July seventh meeting at six PM. And it's a Wednesday, not a Monday because of the holiday. All right. Next on the agenda is item six, PRO final plan and item seven, final plat for Sunny Point Third Plat, lot sixty-four through eighty-nine and tracks J through O. We'll hear both items together and then vote on them separately. And I would ask for the staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair Sanderson and planning commissioners. Before you this evening, our request for a PRO final plan and final plat for Sunny Point Third Plat. The property is owned SF seven PRO, which is single-family with a planned residential overlay and is located at the southeast corner of Northwest Arty Mize Road and Northwest Shepherd Road. The third plat includes twenty-six single-family lots and six common tracks on seven point four-one acres. All right. The PRO final plan is substantial compliance with the amended PRO concept plan approved in July twenty twenty. There are a few minor modifications that are included in the PRO plan, which are outlined in the staff report, as well as in a narrative by the applicant. The modifications include shifting the public sidewalk from the south side of Northwest Soul Drive to the north side, as well as shifting tracks O and tracks L to better accommodate the pedestrian network in the subdivision. Track L has also been reduced, which is located on the eastern boundary of the property, from ten feet to six feet. Originally, the ten-foot buffer was originally intended to accommodate an eight-foot trail. However, the trail is not feasible at that location due to the existing trees and fencing of the adjacent property owner to the east. The trail connection, however, will still be provided from the existing trail at the southeast corner of the site to the east side and then sidewalk along there, sidewalk along there, and then the trail connection. So the trail network is still accommodated with that change. It should also be noted that there is no landscape buffer required along the east property line as it's single-family against other single-family. However, a six-foot buffer will still be provided to preserve the existing fence and landscaping along that east property line. The lot development standards for each lot have been met, including the minimum lot sizes and widths, which a reduction to those was approved as part of the original concept plan back in the early two thousands and that was reapproved in twenty twenty as part of the amended concept plan. Landscape plan is shown up on the screen and has been provided that meets the minimum buffer requirements for tracks along Northwest Arty Mize Road. Additional landscaping has been provided along track J adjacent to the detention pond and the walking trail, as well as street trees adjacent to landscape tracks that are along Soul Drive. A monument sign is proposed at the corner of Northwest Arty Mize and Northwest Soul Drive. There was a condition for the engineering to make sure that that doesn't interfere with utilities, so that will need to be addressed prior to permitting of the monument sign. And then also in the staff packet are building elevations of the proposed homes for the third phase, all generally are single-story with a mix of building materials including siding, stone, and stucco, which is in keeping with the design of the homes built in the previous two phases. Minimum house size is twelve hundred square feet for each lot. And then the last item is for the final plat, which is in substantial compliance with the amended preliminary plat approved in twenty twenty, with the exception of those minor modifications already mentioned as part of the PRO final plan. Staff recommends approval of the PRO final plan with five conditions and approval of the final plat with seven conditions. The final condition for each has been revised to remove the reference to Eagles Ridge from the staff report. These revision, that revision will be reflected in the documents that will be submitted to the city council. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Mr. Ray, any questions from the commissioners for staff? All right. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make any presentation? Okay. All right. Any further discussion from the commissioners? All right. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on the PRO final plan.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the planned residential overlay final plan for Sunny Point, PROF-six, dash twenty-one, dash seven-seven-nine-one with the five staff conditions.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stockenberry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries. I would now ask for a motion on the final plat.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banks.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the final plat of Sunny Point Third Plat, PF-zero-six, dash two-one, dash seven-seven-nine-zero with the seven staff conditions.
All right. Commissioner Banks, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stockenberry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that motion carried and that ad will be heard, that recommendation will be heard by the city council at their Wednesday, July seventh meeting at six PM. Thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the UDC text amendment, UDC-T zero-six-two-one-seven-eight-zero-nine. And I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for exhibits from the city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on June twelve, twenty twenty-one. Four, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And five, twenty fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you. And it looks like Mr. Mallon, you're going to be giving the presentation for?
Yes. Thank you very much, Chair, planning commissioners. This first Unified Development Code text amendment is related to planned development zoning and other development review procedures, regulations, and standards that is being brought at the request of the city council. The city council requested staff bring forward these amendments that impact rezonings and planned developments. There has been concern recently expressed by the city council that plans, specifically those plans that are included with, as part or in conjunction of a rezoning request, including a planned development concept plan or a general development plan, that they do not have sufficient control over the development of the property once that property is rezoned. And therefore, these amendments are being proposed to strengthen the control that those PD concept plans and general development plans have in the development of property, specifically related to how long that they are valid and changing some of the expiration dates on those plans. And in addition, these proposed UDC amendments are intended to clearly outline and improve, streamline the planned development process that is currently utilized by staff and to clear up some of the confusion regarding planned developments, planned residential overlay zoning districts, and restricted overlay zoning districts. So the, quite a bit is involved in this first amendment and I will go through each one of those with you now. Not in order of the language that is being proposed to be changed, but in summary, the first amendment proposes a new planned development special purpose zoning district. Currently, we only have, there are two special purpose zoning districts related to development-specific projects. They are the RO or Restricted Overlay District and the PRO or Planned Residential Overlay District. Those two are currently in the code. This amendment would add a third to specifically relate to the development of land related to projects that request some sort of flexibility or for innovative development projects, and that would be the planned development district. The second thing that this amendment would do is to amend the restricted overlay and the planned residential overlay districts so that the provisions within the UDC related to those special purpose zoning districts are only applicable to existing or currently under development projects that have that RO or PRO designation and that no new restricted overlay or planned residential overlay districts, or those new zoning district designations shall be applied at a singular development project scale. In essence, we are, the intent, back in twenty fifteen, there was a Unified Development Code overhaul and as part of that, that, one of the intents of that was to replace kind of the use that the city had at the time of the planned unit development process, the restricted overlay process, the planned residential overlay process. The city was using all three of those and they were overlapping them on top of each other and it was, in many ways, overkill or doubling up of the same kind of effort. And so part of the twenty fifteen code amendment intent was to utilize the planned development process moving forward for projects that require some sort of flexibility or in their ability to meet the zoning code or for innovative projects that allow for creativity, uniqueness, and then, you know, then ask for some modifications to the zoning code, the UDC. In order to accomplish that, the planned development process was supposed to be the process moving forward. It was pointed out to staff over the past year or so that the language in the code did not necessarily reflect that and that technically, under the code language, that a residential or restricted overlay or a planned residential overlay could still be utilized. And staff does not believe that that was the intent, nor is the best, nor does staff believe that that is the best way to handle these moving forward in terms of trying to create a clear understanding from both the staff perspective and the development community's perspective on what process in the city is to be used when a developer has a project that doesn't quite conform to all of the standard UDC regulations and there's a little bit of flexibility desired. Staff wants to make it perfectly clear that it's the planned development process that is to be used moving forward. We are not, at this time, requesting to remove the restricted overlay or planned residential overlays from the code because we still have a number of projects that are currently being built that have those designations and therefore we need to keep those sections of the code so that in case there's any amendments to those or changes to those projects that we would need to utilize those or refer back to those standards. In addition, there may be in the, in the future, a time when those are modified or removed entirely, but that would be as a separate code amendment. So moving forward, the intent of this code amendment is to solely use the planned development process. And that's why we've proposed to add this new planned development special purpose zoning district and further clarify some of the planned development standards. So we're now getting into the text. We are proposing to completely replace, remove and replace section four oh three oh four oh, zero four zero, excuse me, that talks about the planned development, development review procedure. That's under the development review process section of the code. So rather than trying to strike out and then underline everything that we're going to change in this section, we're just going to remove it and replace it with the new. A lot of it is very similar, but we thought it would be very confusing to try to go through with all the just simple word changes. It would have gotten pretty confusing. So in this, the intent is to strengthen the control that planned developments have over the development of property. The concern raised by city council was that once a property is rezoned, that if the plan that goes along with it under the current code expires, then the city council, the planning commission, doesn't have as much say over what happens with that property going forward because the property has now been rezoned to allow for uses allowed in that zoning district and that the plan doesn't control the development of the property. For example, if we have a project that is zoned planned development and the concept plan under the current code would expire after two years and a new concept plan would be required to come back before the planning commission and then ultimately the city council. The city council felt that that may not be enough control and that may not give the developer enough guidance as to what is being expected to be developed on that property. Similarly, if we have a project that's zoned multifamily and which is to rezone to general business or a commercial zoning district, the code now requires a general development plan to go along with that. The general development plan also expires after two years. And once that general development plan expires, the zoning has now been changed and anything that is allowed under that new zoning district classification can be built. A new general development plan is required to come back through the planning commission and the city council prior to development, but I believe the concern is that that's not strong enough and we need to send, we need to have a clear requirement that not only can no development take place until a general development plan is approved again, but also that perhaps that initial general development plan that triggered the rezoning request should not expire for a longer period of time, therefore control the length of time under which that property would need to be developed under that general development plan. So those were some of the concerns that we're attempting to, to address in this. The first step in these proposed amendments is that the planned development concept plan would no longer expire. It would actually be attached to the ordinance approving, approving a rezoning to this new planned development special purpose zoning district. So any kind of request for a planned development would now be actually, it is technically in the code a zoning map amendment now, but now they'd actually be rezoning to the planned development designation and the PD concept plan would become part of the ordinance approving that planned development zoning designation. Therefore, that concept plan would not expire as long as that PD zoning is attached to the property. In addition to the concept plan, developers will need to provide a set of planned development standards which outline the development regulations for the development of that property. We will ask, and in working with the developers, that only those regulations that are proposed to be modified through the planned development process are included in those planned development standards. The goal is to not have the developer rewrite our entire code back to us if we already have it codified in the Unified Development Code, but to specifically identify those areas from which they are seeking some sort of flexibility or modification. So if it, by way of an example, is if the planned development was proposing smaller lots in terms of lot width, lot size, and then some setbacks, those would be the types of things that are included in the planned development standards. And then there would be a statement that says, "Any development regulations not specified in these planned development standards shall follow the city's Unified Development Code." And so that way we cover our bases and we don't have the developers having to go through extra steps of rewriting our code back to us and then staff having to review our code again. That significantly lengthens the process. And the goal of this is to not lengthen any of the development processes. It's to just clearly put down on the plans and in the planned development standards those regulations from which the developer is seeking some sort of flexibility. Under the current process, the developers provide the staff with a plan that may or may not meet all of our Unified Development Code standards and then staff reviews it and points out to them all of the areas where it doesn't meet the Unified Development Code standards and then has to tell the developer, "You need to put these on the plan or you need to specifically request these," or staff goes through and puts it into the staff report. What we are doing is asking the developers to identify those upfront. As this is their development, they should be able to point those out to us as to where the, where their proposed development is not meeting our minimum regulations. And so all of this is geared towards really solidifying that planned development process and making it clear to staff and making it clear to the developer and then subsequently planning commission and city council what is expected of this development moving forward. So the PD standards and the planned development concept plan are attached to the ordinance approving the planned development zoning district. We have modified the review criteria for the consideration of a new planned development district by both the planning commission and the city council to foster the use of planned developments to be utilized for truly creative and innovative projects in which flexibility is needed and for developments that could not otherwise be developed under the standard zoning district classifications. These review criteria are really meant to look at planned developments the way they were intended to be looked at, which was, they're intended to be used for projects that, I've used the word probably six times now, creative or innovative or offer something different but is desirable or is unique to the city, but that just can't fit into our normal zoning categories or into our normal Unified Development Code regulations. What happens, not only has happened at the city of Blue Springs, but it's happened in other cities that I've worked for and then other cities that I've seen, is that the planned development process over time can get watered down and a PD can be used to simply modify a lot width on a couple of lots because those two lot widths don't meet the minimum regulations. Or it can be used to, another example, to reduce the minimum amount of buffer along a street or reduce the minimum amount of landscaping being provided. So for kind of one or two minor modifications to the UDC, previously, the planned development process was the only way that we had in our code to allow for that flexibility. I think it was two years ago, we brought forward an amendment which allowed for alternative development standards to be included with a preliminary plat or a rezoning or a general development plan or conditional use permit. And as part of that process, those kind of minor amendments that may apply only to two or three lots or to something small in a subdivision, really minor modifications, those can be accommodated now through those requests for alternative development standards. And they don't have to go through this planned development process. And then the planned development process is really saved for those projects, which again are truly unique and, and provide a benefit to the city and just, you know, utilize that kind of flexibility a little bit more than just having a couple areas of where they don't meet the code. So we've kind of taken a couple of baby steps to get to this point, but that was the intent of the alternative development standards, was to eventually get us to this point where there's another way through which developers can request minor modifications in their development from code for specifically things like law development from code for specifically things like lot width, well, for example, like lot width or lot sizes. We've seen those in a couple of developments where the lot width on a cul-de-sac is just a little too small to meet the minimum lot width size. Or we've had a couple of lots that are too big at the end of those cul-de-sacs to fit within a specified building type that's allowed in the zoning district. And so, previously on projects prior to the alternative development standards, we would have processed that as a planned development just for a couple of those minor things. And there really wasn't anything unique or innovative about the project. They, the, the development just couldn't meet the minimum standards because of the design of the cul-de-sac. And so, it really was kind of not the true intent of the planned development. And so we're, we're transitioning to where we utilize the planned development for those really unique projects such as, by way of example, the Edgewater project that'll, that proposed the small lots with smaller setbacks, clustered development, different housing type for a truly kind of different development type that just didn't fit under our normal UDC regulations. So, that's the intent of those new review criteria is to really foster those to be utilized for creative projects. In addition, we have modified the process and criteria for amendments to concept plans, general development plans and PD final plans. Right now in the code, there are some criteria listed under amendments to the final plan. And if the proposed changes to the project comply with the, or I think there's 10 of them, such as changing the non-pervious surface by five percent or more, things of that nature. It says that those are considered minor amendments and can be approved as part of the final plan, but it doesn't say by who those can be approved. So there really is no process right now by which we can take an amendment to a concept plan or there's no criteria by which an amendment to an approved concept plan can either be approved by the planning commission or whether that needs to go back to the city council because it's significant enough that it warrants the city council relooking at it or with the final plan because that is approved by the planning commission, whether at the time of final plan like we just had for the, the Sunny Point project, if there were changes that were minor enough under the code, that those can be approved administratively by staff or if they don't meet these criteria, then they go back to the planning commission to be approved since the planning commission is the approval body for those final plans. So what we have done is clearly specified which criteria constitutes quote, "A major amendment to a concept plan" or, and the same criteria apply to a general development plan because they both occur at that zoning level. And if the proposed amendments meet those criteria, such as not changing any of the allowed uses, not changing any of the perimeter setbacks, reducing the amount of parking required, some of these big ticket items, if those, if those proposed modifications don't rise to that level, then those can be approved administratively by staff as an amended concept plan. If they do propose any of that, then that's substantial change that requires it to go back to city council because that plan is now part of that zoning ordinance, those types of major changes would be considered and actually changed to that zoning district itself. It would have to go back through that process. So, we've tried to establish those criteria so that the developers know what to expect. Planning commission and city council now have the criteria to review these requests and staff can give direction as to how we need to process these amendments because right now it's just not clear and there's some subjectivity in there and staff doesn't want to guess wrong as to what we thought was significant, as to what we didn't think was significant and not bring something back before one, one of the approval bodies that, that approval body thought that should have come back before them. So we're just trying to make that clear as well. We're also proposing to change how planned developments are denoted on the city's official zoning map. Currently, if there's a planned development on the property, we, we utilize the base zoning districts such as SF seven and then we put a slash next to it and have PD to indicate that it was a single family zoning with a planned development attached to it. We are proposing to change that and because this is now a special purpose zoning district, the rezoning would actually be to a PD. So, somebody would rezone property from, say, multifamily to PD and that would be the designation on the official zoning map. And then at the discretion of the director and in working with staff, there could be an additional clarifier, if you will, or identifier to that to call it a PD residential or PD commercial or if it's a mixed use project, PD mixed use to give the public, give the development community, those who are looking at our official zoning maps, a little bit clearer idea of what is that, that, what that planned development entails, not just having it be a blanket PD because sometimes that can lead to confusion. I understand that this will not, this proposed change does not give somebody an exact idea of what is allowed to be built on that site or not. And sometimes people look at the official zoning map and then try to figure out, okay, what can be built on what parcels within the city. And while we do try to make information as clear as possible for the public, when it comes to planned developments, there's often intricacies and, and also nuance into those zoning regulations of that PD that we really don't want general public or developers trying to self-diagnose the zoning on that property without contacting city staff. And so, what this change in how they're denoted on the official zoning map does, it is, it says, "There is a planned development on this process, on this property." It could be denoted as commercial or residential so we get a general idea of what types of land uses could be on the property, but that they need to contact city staff to find out what is truly allowed on that property and what needs to be and what types of development are permitted on that property. So, that is the intent of that change. And then finally, we are proposing to extend the length of time that a general development plan is a, is valid. Currently in the UDC, a general development plan expires after two years. And what we have found and, and, and to help address some of the concerns by city council and others is that two years really is not a long time, especially given financial downturns, the time it takes to secure financing and things of, of that nature, two years is really not enough time. So we're proposing to extend that out to five years. Now, the, the kind of reason behind having it be a shorter timeframe such as two years is that if there are proposed unified development code amendments, you know, that happen from time to time as we bring forward to the planning commission, probably two or three times a year, if that plan expires, then any type of new development plan, new general development plan that is proposed would have to meet all of the new regulations that have been adopted since that original approval. And so, by lengthening that time, there is a concern, if, if we were to make it too long, say, ten years, that that plan could be approved and have it be sitting on the shelf essentially for 10 years and a whole nother set of unified development code text amendments that could be more restrictive in terms of how the city wants to control the development of land such as design standards or parking ratios or things of that nature that that development wouldn't have to comply with because they have an approved set of plans. Now, that also could not benefit the developer if the city were to adopt some unified development code regulations that were actually more flexible or more lenient and gave, actually benefited the developer, which we've done a couple of those as well. So, to help balance that, staff is proposing five years. We presented this to the development advisory commission and I'll get into this a little bit more. And with their suggestion, we have moved that to five years with a caveat that we have put into the, the code language that says if, so once the general development plan is approved, it's valid for five years. However, any subsequent development applications have to comply with the unified development code in place at the time of their next development application under that general development plan. So the way the process works is a general development plan is approved and then typically along with a preliminary plat that usually happened about the same time. And then subsequently, a site plan and design review application is applied for down the road. General development plan is the concept level, kind of like at the PD concept plan level. And then with, with PDs, you get a PD final plan down the road. The same thing happens with general development plans and site plan design review. So, what we're saying is that at the time of that site plan design review application, whether it be at three years or four years, they have to comply with any new regulations that have been adopted by the city since that time of their general development plan approval and now their subsequent site plan design review approval, except if that was something that was specifically called out in the, in the general development plan request. So if that general development plan included a request for alternative development standards to modify the front setback to the parking lot into the building and that was specifically called out in the general development plan as an approved alternative design standard, but everything else about the project had to meet code, then when that, so then that would be the only thing that gets carried forward from that general development plan approval, not the parking ratios, not the building design standards, not height requirement, any, anything else that is standard code. If that gets changed in between the general development plan and subsequent site plan approval or site plan application, they would be required to meet the new standard unless it was specifically called out as a standard that they wanted to carry forward. So, we're trying to achieve both kind of goals here of having that plan carry forward for a longer period of time, but also make sure that if something's changed in between that time of the general development plan approval and the subsequent application that it, it is able to meet the newest standard possible. We recognize that there's going to be some conflict in that and I think that will be a discussion we have to have with the developer at that time. And then that's why we have those new criteria in the code which allow us to do an amendment to a general development plan, either at the administrative level or have to take it back through the process again, is in order to help balance that out in those new requirements. So, those are the intent of elongating that valid general development plan. And again, the planned development concept plans are proposed to not expire at all anymore and in essence, a change to one of those that is significant enough is now considered to be a change to the zoning itself and has to go back through that process. So, I know that that's quite a bit to run through. Apologize if I, I lost anybody in that. I'm happy to answer any questions. The proposed amendments were reviewed by the development advisory commission on June 15th and they recommended, recommended unanimous approval with the suggestion that we increase that general development plan timeframe that it expires from two years to five years.
All right. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. I know the city council, there was concern about going from the two to the five because it gives you more time, but why couldn't we have had, why, if we approved something zoning and then maybe we don't want to zone that because they didn't do their plan?
Mm-hmm.
They let it run out.
Right.
Why couldn't we retro it back to the original zoning?
Yeah, that was one of the, the ma, the first concerns and, and primary concerns brought about by city council was the idea that if we rezoned something for a development specific project, say, from general business to multifamily for a new apartment complex and that general development plan that goes along with it expires and that project falls through, the city council wanted the property to automatically be rezoned back to the general business zoning district. It's a, it's a concept called reverter zoning. And reverter zoning is not used very often, actually very infrequently by cities because it, it would violate state, the state's zoning enabling acts which require that you have to have public hearings for rezonings and also it would kind of violate a city's policy that we've had is that we really, is that we don't rezone property against that property owner's wishes. And so, if we just did an automatic rezoning without the public hearings, we would be violating the state's enabling act and could end up in a situation where that property has now transferred to somebody else over that time and they bought the property with this understanding that they had this multifamily zoning and then the project falls through and then the city rezones the property against their wishes. And so, that's why these reverter policies or reverter clauses aren't found in many zoning or city codes. And if they are, they're found in very specific situations such as in a downtown zoning district or kind of an overlay zoning district or very historic district or some of these very tailored situations. And in fact, we couldn't find many cities that still utilize them. They, they may have it in their code, but they don't actually utilize it. And in, in doing some of our research, the cities that we have found utilize either the planned development process or the requiring a plan with the zoning and then if that plan expires, requiring a new plan to come back through, the way we have our setup is how most of the other cities that we've found control that situation that you've described.
The only reason is that I know about the enabling act, but we already have a public hearing when they come forward the first time. It could be a condition and so we have in the public hearing, we can make a condition knowing that if you don't get this project done within the five years it retro backs.
Yeah, that's not-
But I just, that's another debate, so just go ahead, go on, go on.
Okay.
I just asked, why we didn't?
Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Mallon, not exactly, but kind of along the same lines. Is there anything in here, once we put one of these PD, it's not truly but an exception into some, into a permanent code, is there any kind of a review factor in there? Say, 10 years down the line, we've changed a lot of our views on how something should be done and we don't think that exception is warranted any longer or we wouldn't think it was warranted any longer at that point. Is there any kind of review process if a secondary project comes through and tries to use that same exception?
There is not proposed in this language and there's not many of those provisions, if any that I've seen utilized before. What typically would happen is if, say, for example, we had a PD get established in a concept plan and then it just sat there for 15 years and things have changed dramatically over that amount of time, that developer could still develop under that plan at the time. However, my experience tells me is that they're going to want to change something themselves to update the, to, to the market happening out there at that time 15 years later. And then that's when it kind of opens up that, that project back to staff and the developer negotiating and the staff saying to the developer, "Yes, you want to change this aspect of your planned development. Well, you should also know that since that 15 years ago, staff has adopted things, you know, could be commercial design standards, residential design standards, new parking ratio, any of that thing that if, you know, or we realized we made a mistake and, you know, tried something new on one of those planned developments and then actually saw it happen, play out on another project and we said, "Boy, we wish we would never have done that and we don't want to do that again," then we could have that conversation with them about changing that at that time.
But they wouldn't have to change it.
They would not know.
And that's, that's my concern is that they would not have to change it. They could say, "Well, it's right there, it's in the zoning, it's automatic. Even though I'm changing other things that comply with code, I'm going to still get that exception."
It is. This is one of the potential downsides to wanting to have more control over it is that it does give the city more control in terms of locking the developer into developing what they say they're going to develop, but it also gives the developer more-
Future developers.
Or future developers, more guarantee that they can build to what was approved as part of that zoning. That's correct.
Even though that's no longer current.
Could be no longer current and could be a little bit outdated, yes.
Yeah. And that's, that's why I only concerned about making something permanent with no expiration on it.
Yes. I, I can understand that. And I'm happy to have any suggestions on language. We did not address any-
I, I just, if it's not the original developer after 10 years or something, I'd like there to be some kind of a review or something like that.
Okay. I do know that one of the concerns that has been expressed is that if that project does sell to somebody else, that that new developer doesn't think that they're beholden to the same development standards, say if it was at, you know, a certain level of quality and then it sells to a subsequent developer, that that new developer's not going to be held to that same level of quality. And so that was one of the concerns is trying to lock it in. But staff- Um, but staff could probab, we could try to see if we can find some language that, you know, um, put some sort of review in there. I'm not sure what that looks like.
I, I'm not sure exactly how it would play out, but it would at least allow us to take another look at it and say, this is a dated standard, and we don't, we don't want to allow it.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's something that staff, I'm not, I, I would probably not come up with the best language on the fly here this evening.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
Uh, but I think that that's something that staff could look at, uh, in between now and taking that forward to city council, and, um, and then have that discussion with city council and see if we can come up with a, a couple of concepts, and if the council would like to go forward with that, then we can include that. Um, and that should give us enough time to, to do some research to see what some cities do, um, because from a developer's perspective, is they don't, you know, if they go through the hat, the expense and commitment to do a planned development, and, um, you know, they want to be able to have some sort of guarantee that they're gonna be able to build with, to what they got approved, um, and so they're gonna want to maintain some of that, and, and I think, uh, in trying to work with the development community, we don't want to say, you know, you went through all this time and effort and to do a planned development and got that approved, uh, and then within two years, the city's just gonna change their mind on it, um, without some kind of criteria or some sort of, um, you know what I mean, some sort of standard by which the city would look at that review. Um, it couldn't, uh, and I'm not saying this could, but I could foresee, um, a desire of if, if there was somebody who just didn't like that that project got approved at all back when it was originally approved, uh, and then that review period comes up three or four years down the road, and they just want to just straight deny it or try to change so much on the project that it becomes infeasible, then we've now taken that development kind of right that they have under that planned development away from them. So, I, I think the, the, the devil would be in the details is coming up with what kind of criteria, what would be open to review, what kind of sections of that planned development would be, you know, reviewable like you suggested. I think we could come up with those, at least an idea.
Yeah, I, I think it, it would need to be a, and again, uh, I'm, you know, on the fly like you are, but, um, something, you know, a pretty good length of time down the road, not a two years or, you know, but, and, and definitely a new developer. If there's a change in developer, I think that, that could be a trigger that would cause us to look at something else. That's just my thoughts.
Okay.
Well, it's similar to what you're talking about, you know, home associations, when you sell a piece of property, the cabinet's restrictions fall with the new owner. Why couldn't we have deed restrictions where it goes from one owner, and then they sell it to the next? If the developer sells it to another developer, then there's restrictions, basically the, uh, this is how it's supposed to be developed. You gotta, you're gonna buy it, then you buy it according to what's been approved. And if you want to change anything, you gotta go in front of the city.
Well, and that's the way it, it's written now, is if it, and there's, there's statements in here that say this planned development and everything that goes along with it shall be applicable to all subsequent, anybody who buys it or subsequent developers of, of that nature. So, that's in the proposed language. The review criteria or the review period is, and, um, and oftentimes, the way the, the development process works is there will be companies that actually get the property entitled, that come through, and they're the, kind of the land entitlement experts. They're not the builders, they're not the ones who actually put the shovels in the ground and do the, do the development work themselves, and so there are oftentimes where the projects transfer and are designed or deliberately transfer, uh, ownership, once that city council or planning commission approval is, is obtained, uh, then you now have a project that can be sold to a home builder like Summit Homes, uh, or another home builder, future home buyers or home builders down the road. So, um, I understand the concern, uh, and I think that's what, you know, one of, uh, some of the things that we can look at.
Any other questions from the commissioners for staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Mallon, is there any, uh, statistics on the number of concept plans that have reached expiration versus those that have gone through?
No, we did not do that kind of analysis. Um, anecdotally, I'd have to rely on Matt's superior memory to mine, um, but I'm trying to think of projects that we've had that have been expired recently. Colonial Highlands had one.
Yeah, and that's about, that's about the only one that probably did, um, because of Chapman Farms, all of that was a master plan community, so, because part of, some parts of that had developed before the recession, everything was locked in place by that. Um, so really, it was just Colonial, Colonial Highlands. Eagles Ridge had started development, so that I can't really think of any other than, other than that one that, where we had an expiration issue with.
Okay, second question would be, uh, was it city council that picks the five-year plan or is, uh, extension to five years from the two year? Was that city council that proposed that, or was that community development that came up?
That was, uh, uh, during the Development Advisory Commission meeting, um, we brought that up, uh, as, as something we were looking for a little bit of guidance on, and, and I believe through the discussion between staff and the Development Advisory Commission, uh, five years was, was kind of discussed and, and agreed upon. At that time, city council did not, uh, propose the five-year increment. It was something that staff and the Development Advisory Commission, um, discussed, and that's why we brought it forward.
Okay, the only concern I have on this is that if you reach a five-year, um, let's say a piece of prime property sits for five years, and then that five-year ends, and then somebody else comes and buy it, and then they get another five-year plan put in place, I mean, we've got, you know, basically, you have a piece of property that won't be developed for several years in a row. Uh, that's the only thing that concern, concerns me at this point. I like the rest of the plan that's here, but, um, that, that piece really concerns me a little bit.
Okay.
But thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mallon. Um, so at this time, I would ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the project. I'd ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition on project, the, the amendment. Okay. Any other further discussion from the commissioners? Okay, and I will close this public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on this UDC text amendment.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that UDC text amendment, UDCT zero six two one seven eight zero nine be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Banks, uh, this will be a real call vote.
Planning Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokelberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Uh, so this item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Wednesday, July seventh meeting at six P.M. So we'll move to the next, um, UDC text amendment, UDCT zero six two one seven eight one zero, open the public hearing, and ask for exhibits from our city attorneys, Yacquie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on June twelve, twenty twenty-one. Four, Title IV land use section Blue Springs code ordinances by reference. And five, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
Thank you, and I think Mr. Wright, you'll be presenting this one.
All right, thank you, Chair Sanderson and commissioners. Um, before this evening are UDC text amendments related to outdoor dining and seating areas. Um, since the start of the pandemic, there's been increased interest in adding or expanding outdoor seating areas throughout the city, and the city does not have any minimum standards for seating areas and where they are appropriate. Um, in an effort to better accommodate seating areas, staff is recommending to add new code sections for both permanent and temporary outdoor seating areas. Um, the first section to be amended is in the downtown development code, which is section four oh four two four zero. Um, this is currently the only code section that references outdoor seating in the, in the unified development code and is specifically for seating on the public sidewalk in downtown, uh, which is predominantly Main Street. Um, staff is recommending to strike most of the existing language that is shown on the screen and add five, um, standards to that. Um, these standards include allowing outdoor dining and seating areas in the public right of way as an extended temporary use permit for up to nine months between, uh, March first and November thirtieth. Currently, most temporary uses are only permitted in sixty-day increments, and there are limitations on how many, um, temporary use permits can be issued, um, on a property or for a particular use during a three hundred and sixty-five day period. Um, with this extended temporary use permit, um, a business would only be required one temporary use permit for that entire nine-month period, um, rather than having to renew those multiple times throughout the year. Um, other standards that have been added, um, include, um, this limiting the seating area to only that portion that is within, in front of their storefront, um, as well as maintaining the minimum ADA sidewalk widths and clearances, which is, um, keeping, in keeping with what's already in the code that is proposed to be, um, removed and added elsewhere. Um, some other standards include keeping the physical, the design of the furniture, umbrellas and other structures compatible with the main building, and keeping the outdoor seating area, um, clean, um, to maintain health, safety and sanitation requirements. The downtown review board reviewed the proposed amendments to the downtown development code, um, last Thursday and recommended approval with some modifications, uh, which have been outlined in this, uh, bullet pointed in the staff report on page two of the staff report. Um, that includes revising the expanded temporary use permit from nine months to twelve months to allow outdoor seating, um, year-round, and to add two sections, um, section six and seven. Uh, section six states all outdoor seating areas where a tenant has a liquor license will be required to add the outdoor seating area to their licenses in order to sell and serve alcoholic beverages in the outdoor seating area. And section seven states that any use of city-owned sidewalks shall be subject to an application for approval by the downtown review board. And again, these would just be for the temporary outdoor seating, um, uses that are in the public right of way. This is, this is separate from the permanent outdoor seating that I will, um, get in here to in just a minute. Um, the second section, um, that would be amended is the accessory use section in section four oh five zero six zero. This includes adding outdoor dining and seating areas as listed accessory use, and then bumping down the, um, kind of the catch-all, um, down at, um, a new section O. And then adding section nine, which is the outdoor dining and seating areas, and a list of several standards that coincide with that. And these are generally going to be for permanent outdoor seating areas on private property, although, um, there will be also, some, these will also apply to temporary outdoor seating areas on private property as well, which will get in, uh, which is another section that's being amended. Uh, but this section does define the, um, land uses in which outdoor dining and seating areas, uh, may be requested. Um, other outdoor seat, uh, other, um, areas in this section, um, again, are more likely to be constructed as permanent, and therefore there are additional, uh, standards, including the review and approval processes for those permanent outdoor seating areas. Uh, these standards include, um, providing location parameters for outdoor dining areas, which are generally less restrictive, um, than permanent structures. Um, some of that includes allowing outdoor dining areas in the front and side yard setbacks, provided that there are no encroachments into required landscape buffers, um, nor does it interfere with any pedestrian or vehicle, um, traffic, um, or required minimum widths for those, um, pedestrian or vehicle access points. Um, the hours of operation are limited to the hours of operation of the primary business, and, um, that would essentially for a restaurant, if they're open till ten, they have to close their outdoor dining down at ten as well. The outdoor dining can't continue to operate after the, the restaurant is closed. And for those businesses that may be open past eleven or before six, uh, we've just put a requirement in there that the noise control ordinance, um, applies to that outdoor use. Um, outdoor dining and seating areas less than four hundred and fifty square feet cannot reduce the total number of parking spaces below the minimum required for that, for the principal use, which is generally a restaurant. Um, areas larger than four hundred and fifty square feet are treated as an addition to the building, so they will need to accommodate additional parking for that added, um, square footage of the outdoor dining area. Um, the reason staff chose the four hundred and fifty square foot, um, cutoff is primarily due to we have, um, other requirements in the code, um, where four hundred and fifty square feet is the minimum where staff can request an administrative site plan design review. Um, so that number, we already have built into the code, so just keep, uh, building in that consistency with that. Anything less than four hundred and fifty square feet would still be reviewed, but it may just be reviewed by a building permit as opposed to a, a full administrative site plan design review process. Um, outdoor seating areas that are in excess of four hundred and, four hundred and fifty square feet do need to be delineated with railings, fencing, potted plants or other decorative elements, um, and the same standards that are, were included in the downtown development code related to, um, keeping the physical design of, um, furnishings and structures, um, compatible with the main building, um, as well as keeping the areas clean, uh, for health, safety and sanitation requirements. Um, a list of items that are required as part of the review of the site plan design review for an outdoor seating area has been provided in section I. Uh, this includes a dimensioned site plan showing the access to and from the outdoor dining area, as well as the number and locations of all furnishings and other design details, including the design of proposed barriers or enclosures. Uh, the third section being amended is section four oh five, um, zero seven zero, which is the temporary uses section, and this is, uh, again, the same language that, um, or similar language that is being included, proposed for the downtown development code, um, just specifying that there's an extent, a new extended temporary use permit option specifically for outdoor dining and seating areas, so they wouldn't be subject to that sixty-day limit, um, like most temporary uses. Um, and again, this would only be for temporary uses, this particular section is only for temporary uses on, um, private property, um, and is separate from the, the closets in the downtown development code. Um, temporary outdoor dining and seating areas on private property are subject to the same accessory use standards, uh, which are all of these standards that are under section nine that I just went through. Uh, the fourth and final section is an amendment to the glossary in section four eleven, uh, zero four zero, and that's just adding a definition of outdoor dining and seating area. The development advisory commission reviewed the proposed amendments on June fifteenth and recommended approval of the amendments, uh, with four, four of the amendments and one against. The vote for denial was due to the concerns in the downtown development code that would allow temporary outdoor seating in the public right of way, which is not just limited to the sidewalk, but could also include parking spaces in the street. Um, so there were some concerns about, um, possibly utilizing, um, public on-street parking for, um, private businesses to utilize that. So that was the primary concern with that vote against that. Um, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, the downtown review board reviewed the proposed amendments to just the downtown development code section on June twenty-fourth, and they recommended approval of the amendments with the amendment to the temporary use permit time period extension and the two additional standards that I went over regarding liquor licensing and downtown review board approval. Um, staff does recommend approval of the text amendments as submitted by staff. Um, the text does not include the downtown, the, the text that is in the, um, body of the report does not include the downtown review board's recommendation. Um, however, the planning commission may recommend incorporating those recommendations or make their own recommendation to the city council. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions further for, uh, staff? Commissioner Phillips?
Um, I, I just want, I need some clarification here, um, on the downtown code. As presented, does it allow them to use parking spaces or not? And was that, and the person who voted against it, was, did they want parking spaces used or did they not want the parking spaces used?
Yeah, the cons, the concern, um, the way that it's written, it says it may be permitted in the public right of way, uh, which does allow it to potentially be operated in parking spaces as well as the sidewalk. Uh, the reason it says public right of way is currently we have had, um, as part of the, we, we adopted an emergency ordinance that allowed temporary outdoor seating, um, and s, we did have, actually, we have one right now, um, that's in the, in public parking, and then there was one last summer that was in public parking, and so.
I actually thought there were two last summer.
Yeah, we had, um, both Brewers and East Forty have utilized, um, outdoor seating in a parking, on a, on Main Street in a public parking space. Um, and so, if that is something that the planning commission, um, or Um, and so if that is something that the Planning Commission, um, or city council would like to see continued, it would need to remain as public right-of-way. If the, um, concern is that that is something that, that, that you don't want to see any longer, then it could be revised to public sidewalk and just limit to the sidewalk. That's what's in the code right now, is the sidewalk. But under the emergency ordinance, we, there were some exceptions made to, to allow some additional expansions of those.
I would like to see it include the parking, uh, spaces as well, as long as it's in front of your own business. Because the sidewalks, again, the rules requiring ADA compliance and everything else, those sidewalks are, some of them just barely meet those requirements. It really doesn't give you an opportunity to do anything, so.
Yeah.
And if you're taking away your own parking space in front of your own business, that's, uh, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So I just, I just wanted clarification to make sure that that would still be allowed.
Yes, that would still be allowed. The, the one, um, person in opposition to that, their concern was, they hear about, concerns about not enough parking on Main Street. So their concern was particularly the main block between, um, 11th and 12th Streets. Um, taking up parking in that area, uh, they felt was, was valuable to, uh, not expand there.
I can, I can speak for Downtown Alive in that, uh, the majority of the, of Downtown Alive, um, has looked at several options to, that would in, in fact, reduce some of the parking spaces there to give the businesses more opportunities. So they're not, uh, most of those businesses are not against that, so.
Okay.
Um, anyway, the second part of the question, um, we're talking about dining and seating here. Um, it also said entertainment, um, on the private property. Uh, would this ordinance allow, um, like what Miller Theaters did with, um, the outdoor movie theater, uh, during, during the pandemic and things like that in a, on a more permanent basis?
Yeah, to, to clarify the language in here, so, um, it's outdoor dining and seating areas shall be allowed as an accessory use for retail, commercial, service, entertainment and craft manufacturing land uses. And the reason why those categories are in there, if you look at our land use table, those are the headings of each of those sections. Uh, but really what we're looking for is those land uses that are within those categories have to do one of the following, which would be processing, preparing, selling or serving food or beverage. So if they are, fall within that, um, category, then they could, could request an outdoor dining and seating area.
So, so if it doesn't involve food service, this would not, um, accommodate them?
Correct. Now, they, they would still fall under, they could do like a special event permit. That's how they're allowed to do a lot of their events. But if they're, but they would have to have some kind of a restaurant use, um, in which they're, they're using that outdoor, a permanent outdoor dining use for. So this is really, and the reason why we've added some of those other items like craft manufacturing, um, like if a, a winery or a brewery or somebody where their, their primary business is not a restaurant, but they still may be serving, um, other types, you know, alcohol or they may be serving small plates of, of things, um, or snack foods related to their business, that accommodates them as well. So it's not just strictly written for restaurants, but it could be for other uses that may sell and prepare food.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, uh, along with Commissioner Billups, it doesn't specify what kind of food. So if they are going to have a movie, they could sell popcorn and pop. Cause it doesn't specify what kind of food or beverage.
Correct, yeah, and if they're doing their, the, like an outdoor movie and they're, they have popcorn beverages there, then that's fine. That would be part of a special event. So that would be different than, than what this code is intended to address.
So they could get it temporary for nine months. If they're gonna continuously, they'd have to keep going for a special permit?
Yes, I, I believe that's how we would interpret that.
Is that cost them more money than just getting a temporary?
For special event permits, we typically, um, there's usually not a fee involved with those.
Just the inconvenience.
Cause their primary business is not selling food or beverages.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions for staff on this text amendment? Mr. Chair? Commissioner Peel?
I think, uh, the temporary seating and, and dining is also pursuant to what Public Works needs as far as if they need to, um, repair something that's in the right-of-way or repaving or removing snow or things like that, is, that's correct.
Yeah, that is built into, it's only built into the downtown code cause that is the only, only part of the city where we would allow these outdoor seating areas in the public right-of-way. Um, so yes, during that nine-month period or 12-month period, if, if that is what the Planning Commission wants to recommend, um, they may be required to be removed as requested by the Director of Public Works for the repair, replacement or maintenance of public infrastructure, which could include streets, sidewalks and utilities. So there is that caveat in there that it's not a guarantee that their permit will be approved for that entire time and they may be notified that they would need to move it, um, for any of those types of improvements that may need to be made.
Okay, I'm assuming they're giving a timestamp? In other words, you have so many days to remove it or?
Yeah, I think if, um, if there was some kind of a construction project that was planned, they would be given, um, notice in advance to, to have, to make plans to move that.
All right, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for staff on this topic? All right, uh, we now ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this, uh, unified text amendment? I would ask if there's any in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? Any other further discussion from the commissioners? Okay, go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for motion on this, uh, UDC.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I move that you know, Unified Development Code, UDC T zero six two one seven eight one zero, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, have a motion. Uh, do I have a second?
May I ask a question? Would that include the changes recommended by the Downtown Review Board?
That include, yes, I will modify that motion and say that includes the modification that was outlined by the Downtown Review Board.
So we have a motion for...
Thank you.
Um, from Commissioner Peel, uh, including the recommendations by the Downtown Review Board.
Second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Peel. This will be a roll call vote.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, Commissioner Billups?
Yep. Planning Commissioner Stokelberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
All right, this item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Wednesday, Ju- July 7th meeting at 6:00 PM. And we'll move to the last, uh, public hearing for the UDC text amendment, UDC T zero six two one seven eight one one. Now open the public hearing and ask for exhibits from the city attorney.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on June 12, 2021. Four, Title IV land use section Blue Springs code ordinances by reference. And five, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right, thank you, and Mr. Wright, I think you'll be presenting on this one as well.
Yep, uh, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Before this evening, um, are text amendments related to driveway widths for single-family and two-family residential lots. Um, as it has become increasingly common for most new single-family homes to have three and in some cases four-car, uh, front-loaded garages, uh, we have continued to receive requests for wider driveways at the right-of-way. Um, and that does provide, uh, increased, um, access, ingress, egress between the street and, um, garage doors. The city's current maximum width at the right-of-way is 30 feet, which is on the lower end of several area communities that generally range between 30 and 36 feet at the right-of-way. Um, staff is recommending a five-foot increase to allow a maximum 35-foot wide driveway, um, at the right-of-way while still maintaining the 50, maximum 50% coverage within the front yard. Um, whichever, so in this situation, it would be 35 feet or 50% coverage, whichever is less. Um, so a, a standard 65-foot lot may only get a 32 and a half foot wide driveway if they're going straight from the street up to the house, uh, whereas a 70-foot lot could, could have the 35-foot wide driveway from the street all the way up to the house. Um, for corner lots, that cumulative total of driveway widths at the right-of-way is also being increased from five feet to 45 feet, um, or increased by five feet to 45 feet. Currently, it's 40 feet. Uh, this would allow a corner lot to still have a 35-foot driveway on their primary frontage and a 10-foot wide driveway on the side street, um, to access, if they have a detached garage or a side-loaded garage, um, that's in the basement, they can still accommodate that, uh, with that five-foot increase. Um, the Development Advisory Commission reviewed the proposed amendments on June 15th and recommended unanimous approval. And staff also recommends approval of the proposed text amendments, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions from the commissioners for staff? Commissioner Billups?
Lots of questions tonight.
[laughing]
Um, does this, um, make any changes in the cul-de-sac high-shaped lot, um, with requirements and 50% and all of that? That we, we seem to get a lot of exceptions for.
Yeah, it, it does not, there, there's still a 50% maximum coverage on a cul-de-sac lot. Um, probably about 10 years ago, that the maximum coverage for all residential lots was 35%. And then I believe that there was a change, um, seven or eight years ago that increased that to 50% for cul-de-sacs because there were so many variances coming through the process, um, to make that request. And so there was a change, uh, several years back to just increase that to 50% for all residential lots. So we, we, we've addressed that, um, before. Uh, so this, this is just to really better accommodate larger, uh, wider garages. We're seeing a lot of, of garages from side to side that are more than 30 feet in width. And rather than, um, having this little bow shape that comes out of it, it's, it's, uh, we're getting a lot more requests to just be allowed to go straight from your, both sides of the walls of the garage, all the way out to the street. Um, and that, this comfortably accommodates a three-car garage. Four-car garages still won't be completely accommodated by this. Um, but it, it's, it, it's something that's been requested by multiple builders and homeowners.
Any other questions for staff on this one? All right, I would ask if there's any, uh, one in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this? I would ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? Any further discussion? Close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this UDC text, uh, text amendment.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I move that Unified Development Code, UDC T zero six two one seven eight one one for wider driveways be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. We have a second?
Second.
All right, yeah, thank you. Commissioner, second from Commissioner Banks, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokelberry?
Aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Aye.
So motion carried. Uh, this item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Wednesday, July 7th meeting at 6:00 PM. And that'll take us to other business. Um, Mr. Wright?
Yep, uh, we do have a meeting on Monday, July 12th. Um, and I also wanted, we have all of our associate planners here this evening, wanted to, um, introduce them, um, to you all. Um, we met Jamarcus McGee, who presented the conditional use permit. Um, he started in January, um, and we'll be seeing him more, more frequently at Planning Commission meetings as he will be taking more cases. Um, Adair Bright, she is a, also one of our associate planners who started in January. Um, and she will be coming before the Planning Commission next month with a, a couple cases. And then Shayna Kelly is our newest associate planner. She started a couple weeks ago and took Nathan Jury's position. And she will also be coming before the Planning Commission, uh, the next meeting with some cases. So, uh, we are fully staffed again, so we're really excited and, um, glad that you finally get to meet, um, our new so- associate planners.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yes, indeed.
All right, uh, does any commissioners have any other business? All right, uh, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.